I'd like to call to order the city council meeting Thursday, August 28th, 2025. Everyone, we stand by the pledge of allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott and Phil, Father God, we come to you today grateful for everything that you've done for us. Father, we ask you to give peace and comfort to the victims of the school shooting in Minnesota. And we ask you, Father, to help us put the right words in our heart, the right words in our mouth, I'm sorry, as we go about the business of the city of Toulouse tonight. These things we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen. Roll call, Gerald.
Scott?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Scott? Oh, Linda. For now, Dave. Day?
Here.
And Will?
Here.
Okay, before we go on to public comments on the agenda, there was an incident that happened at the last meeting. I disclosed some conversations that I had, and Councilman Wells indicated that he thought that a violation of the Open Meetings Act had occurred. So what I did was, I spoke with someone in the Attorney General's office about the incident, and I have decided to self-report the potential violation. So I've sent a letter to the Attorney General's office, asking them for an opinion on that particular incident. This is how I am, okay? If a mistake is made or whatever, I'm gonna take full responsibility for it and be accountable for whatever happens. So I wanted to let everyone know that that letter has gone to the Attorney General's office. If there's anyone else who wanted to file any type of complaint or anything like that, you have up to 60 days to do it. You need any help with an address or whatever, you can do that. Scott and Will?
Yes, as a council member, why wasn't we afforded that letter that you sent to the Attorney General?
I just sent it today.
Okay, so the council will be presented with it?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And also request a copy of the last meeting audio as well.
Okay, yes, sir.
You made two different statements. You said you sent, you reported the issue to the Attorney General, and then you said you asked for an opinion. So which did you do?
I did both. I sent the letter explaining what happened, and I actually put verbatim from the recording what I said. And then I asked in that letter for an opinion, were those conversations, did they constitute a walking law?
So if you, if you send a letter, you talked to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General told you to send a letter?
No, no, I spoke with him and asked him what the process was.
Of sending a letter?
Yes. So I went through the situation with him, I explained what happened, and I told him that I was self-reporting, and that's what I did.
So, Madam Mayor, I think the question I'm asking is, why would you report yourself if you felt that you wasn't in violation? Secondly, why would you ask for an opinion if you feel when you're self-reporting? It doesn't make sense of what you're stating. You know, I'm not an attorney, but it doesn't make sense of you self-recording and then asking, turn around and asking for an opinion of that, the same thing. Now, it's been several instances in this, in this, in this chamber where I think Councilwoman Wells and Councilwoman Harris have asked for an opinion, and the whole council has asked for Attorney General's opinion, and we haven't gotten those opinions. So all of a sudden, now, we receiving opinions on, you want to, you know, send an opinion on something that we know, and it's stated in, in the Larson Act, that you violated. So I don't understand self-reporting and, and asking for opinion at the same time. That does, just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so again, I told what happened. I could have done something wrong, I could not have done something wrong. That's what I was asking the opinion of.
See, this is my concern, because I, I, I think before that happened, the council should have been privy to the letter, because when I look at the minutes and what's stated in the minutes, it's not what was stated in the meeting. So I, I, I wanted, I wish you would let us, I'm still gonna make my report myself, because what we got in the minutes as to what you said your conversation was, is not how it took place in the council meeting. So usually when you're gonna get Attorney General's opinion, the attorney would instruct you to give that letter to each one of the council members before it's being sent out. And we usually endorse the action that's going forward as a council.
And also gives a record of some of the actions.
So what's supposed to happen is that there should have been some type of notice also put on the agenda that there was, there was gonna be an action that was gonna be taken. You know, because right now, you say you sent a letter off today, and the council gonna have it nowhere. So if we're gonna do a self-reporting or ask for opinion, I think the council should have signed it before it went.
Okay, so we didn't ask for it, I did. The council did, hold on, hold on, okay? I took it upon myself to do that. So you say you were going to send in your, your letter as well, okay? And I did that upon myself.
My, 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 my point, my point is-
Actually, what we're gonna do right now is go ahead with the meeting. I was letting you know, you guys know, what had happened, okay? Whatever action that you feel like you guys want to take, or individually, or whatever, you can do that.
Okay, what I'm saying, as a council person, because as a mayor, there's certain things you can do on your own. There's certain things that the council has said so in. But I'm saying, as the mayor, if you're reporting or asking for opinion on a potential open meetings law violation in the city council meeting, then the city council should be privy to that letter before it's sent, that's my opinion. So I, I think we should see what was sent, because the letter can say, like you said in the meeting, that you asked them why they voted no on past occasion, that's not what was stated. So can you give us a copy of that letter that was sent?
Sure, I'll give you a copy after the meeting.
Madam Mayor, one more thing, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, so listen, you actually already spoken on this, yes, ma'am?
No, no, that is a knowledge you got.
Okay, no, 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 just one second, okay? Right, hold on just one second. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
I, I just have one question, I wasn't here last time, so I don't know what the subject is about. If there is a subject here that's a heifer rights violations or anything like that, does that subject, that the person potentially know about whatever this is? I mean, I just, I, I wasn't here, so I apologize that I don't understand a lot of what y'all were talking about. So just to be sure, is every, I mean, I applaud you turning it in, that's fabulous to do. And I applaud you following up, that's fabulous. But is everybody covered who was part of this subject about whatever was inadvertently potentially described, yes, you think so?
Yeah, because what's supposed to happen, not only would the mayor be subject to open meeting violation, but it's also every individual council person that she spoke to, that's correct.
That sounds scary.
Because that's what's supposed to happen, it's not just you reporting it, because you spoke to Mr. Scott, Ms. Houston, and Ms. Day. So they are in violation of the open meetings law as well. So they should be included in that letter, which I'm gonna put in there. And that's why I said before it was sent, we should have had a copy of what you were sending. And I wish we could get it today before we leave.
Thank you for your opinion.
And now, and also, when we, Attorney stated we not adopting Robert Wu's order, I beg to differ. I think it was done a long time ago, because if we have not adopted Robert Wu's order, then how are we going about saying a person can speak on an item once on the agenda? What are we using to say that a person can only speak for three minutes? So if we have not adopted a part of material procedure, then how are we governing the meeting on how someone can, how they can speak? And how long can they speak?
I actually know there's a court decision on that.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so-
Madam Mayor.
Hold on just one second, everyone, okay? All right? What we're gonna do now is go on with our meeting, okay?
Okay, I would like to ask the final question on this particular item, because this is very important. Because I want, not only, other council members may want to file something, I, I think I want to file something. I, I want to know, where did you send that letter to?
The gentleman's name is David Smith.
To the Attorney General's office?
Ambassador.
So, so why didn't you send, you don't send ethics complaints to the Attorney General's office?
Okay, so this wasn't an ethics complaint, this was an open, by, open meeting violation.
The Attorney General doesn't handle that open meetings violation. They can give you, okay.
All right. Public comments on the agenda, are there any, any public comments on the agenda?
Mayor, uh, I'll have a public comment, but I would like to add something to the agenda, if possible.
And that is?
Uh, one item that I've talked to Ms. Day about, she's worried, uh, is concerned about the lighting on East Scott Street and Griffin Street, see what you all can do by getting some lighting on those streets, please, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna be talking about lighting, under my mayor's report.
Okay, what about the playground down there, the fence of the playground?
Um, once they're done, then the fence will be the last thing to go up.
The fence will be the last thing to go up?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you considered moving back over some, the equipment back over some of the road?
The equipment is cemented again.
What, uh?
It's cemented again.
Only cemented it in already?
Yeah, can't be moved.
And the kids were down there the other day putting them down. When I came back to town Sunday evening-
Putting what down?
They were at the playground, right at the road. The young man was putting whatever it is, he was putting it down, I didn't realize it was in the ground. I asked him to get off and go home. So will you all please check on that, please, maybe it's not cemented down enough. And they, they had something.
Public comments on the agenda, go ahead, Miss Day.
I wanna add, uh, discussion of the Kellys, whether or not Kelly's Department is annexed or not.
Okay, so, and the other thing that I wanted to say, I had said at the last meeting that boundaries and all that would be on this agenda. There's some other information that I'm trying to get right now. I really wasn't involved in all of that, so I want to make sure that I understand it as it's supposed to be in its entirety. So that will actually be on the next agenda, however, I don't think that question can be, I don't think that Kelly's is annexed at this point. I couldn't answer that question.
I, I have the information that it was, that's why I asked my favor of interest of the council, if possible.
So we have a motion for Ms. Day to add, Mrs. Day, or add Kelly's Department's annexation to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Frankly, motion by Ms. Day, second by Ms. Harris, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any other public comments on the agenda?
I, I, I think I do have, on item number seven, the introduction of the ordinance to adopt this budget. Uh, I guess tonight is only introduction, but when will we discuss those, this particular budget? Or will, is that something we'll do tonight as well?
Um, so it's just being introduced tonight, there's not supposed to be any discussion, but at the public hearing, that's when all the discussion should take place.
You know, that, that's a, that's an issue that I have, because it's several things that, and I, trust me, I'm not fighting this administration at all. I just want to make sure that we all are in line and, and, because I think we all in this room want the best for the city.
You bring company down, that one's gone.
I think we all want the best for the city, so therefore, um-
I don't think she heard what you, the councilman said.
Go ahead, don't listen. Mr. Wilson, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, therefore, I think that we, we should spend a great deal of time on the budget, because I've, I've gone through this budget, um, a, a great deal. And I see some issues and some things that, that bothers me. And I'm sure it bothers, I'm sure if the council members have looked over the budget thoroughly, it should bother them as well, especially with the, with the state of, financial state that we in right now. So I, I, I think that, you know, when we have a discussion, immediately, you guys go ahead on and vote on it. And I don't think it's fair to, to the citizens, because we need to digest this. This is the citizen, the people's money, not an individual administrator or council member's money. It's the people's money, and we should be held accountable how we, how we spend and operate the people's money.
Okay, so what I would suggest, Mr. Wilson, and I know you said you have some, uh, some things that you would like to see on the budget, or some areas of concern, whatever the case may be. When we have our public hearing, you can bring those things up, or if you would like to, there's gonna be a two-week time period, and we can speak with Mr. Odom to let him know, you know, what those things are, and then we can make sure during the public hearing that those issues are brought up, he is aware of them, might be something that he's not even thinking about.
Madam Mayor, I, you know, you, you constantly say, and trust me, I'm not fighting you at all, but you, you, you say that we need to speak with Mr. Odom, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Odom, I respect you with all, with, with everything, my heart. Um, but, and I don't think that you're incompetent, but you, you guys have labored him incompetently. Therefore, how can, if, if I, why should I speak with a person that you guys say that he doesn't know what he's doing? And I think he know, he know exactly what he's doing. So, Ms. Councilwoman Houston have said it?
No, Councilwoman Houston has not said that. Councilwoman Houston said, I know what you're saying, don't do that, please don't do that. Please don't do that, I never said Gerald, I never said Gerald was incompetent.
You're saying-
I said Gerald had knowledge of something that before we did, he should have shared. That does not say he was incompetent. Please don't lie to me.
I'm not, ma'am, I-
Please, go ahead on pitch, Mayor. Go ahead, Ms. Houston, Ms. Houston?
You can-
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson.
Let me finish, let me finish what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir.
First of all, when I come in this council chamber, I'm not pitching for anything, uh, because I, I, I believe in who I am. And I don't need an individual, I don't believe-
Go ahead and go with the comments to the budget, sir.
Please, I don't need an individual to tell me what I'm doing.
I don't need an individual to go, to say I'm lying when I didn't. All right. Okay, any other public comments on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
I already gonna discuss the, uh, page, the last page on this, like the water, like the water.
Uh, yeah, that's for you, I'm gonna give an update on water, all right? And if you have some specific questions you can ask, and if I can answer it, I'll certainly give you the information. Are there any more public comments on the agenda?
Yes, when it comes, when it comes to the budget, and then when I, and I know you all said we can have a discussion on it, but what has happened is a discussion, when we have a public hearing, it's just, we just talking. The decisions already been made, I found out how the decisions already been made about voting for the budget. But when you add, oh, you plan that budget by yourself, it is, because are there any raises included in that budget?
Very small.
Yes, and, and when we had our last budget meeting, it was clearly stated to do to our financial constraints. I saw we went from one billion five to like one million six in salaries. So if we had a financial strain here, ma'am mayor, and I said, I don't think we should give anyone a raise right now.
I agree.
So then to turn around-
Hey, wait, wait, because you just, he just said he agrees, and I think you maybe, I think he's not listening to what you're saying.
No, what I'm saying is, when I look at the budget, I see that there's raises given in the salaries in their groups, which means someone has got a raise. And after we had our last budget meeting, I said, ma'am, you know, because you mentioned employee about giving, I said, no, I don't think we should do that right now, because of the financial strain the city is under. And then when I get the budget and I see that there's raises, the salaries has increased, that mean we had given somebody a raise.
Okay, so Gerald, since July 1st, has anyone been given a salary increase in this new budget? Or were, were those salary increases in last year?
No, that was one of the things I had to work on, because, you know, I feel like it's gonna be extremely hard to get very close to our budget this year, although I think it's attainable if things don't come out of the woodwork, which has already started happening.
Okay, so what I think we're doing now is discussing what we're not supposed to be discussing.
And, and the reason why, the reason why I think we need to have discussions.
Okay, so I think everyone has a number of questions that they would like to ask about your budget. We're going to have a public hearing in two weeks.
And, and, Ma'am Lewis, you cannot use your voice or the gavel to stop someone from talking.
Okay, well, you're, you're discussing an item that we're not supposed to be discussing, Councilman Wells, okay? That, that's just the end of it. You're discussing an item that we're not supposed to be-
Are there any questions about an item on the agenda?
Right, and you have gone into a discussion about the budget.
Yes, because I know how this process is gonna go.
Okay.
When we come to the, after you introduce it, you have a discussion, uh, on, in two weeks, in regards of this, what's supposed to happen when it's introduced. If the council has a concern with the budget, the negotiation will start back over based on the council's people concern.
Okay, but you're on the budget committee, so if you had any concerns, they certainly should have been-
And I have all my concerns, and one of my concerns abortion now, is there's raises that has been given.
And that's a substantive conversation about the actual budget. I have advised this now four times in this meeting. The only thing that can be done is an introduction of the ordinance. You cannot discuss the specifics of it, it's a violation of the open meetings law to do so. So again, that's my advice, you don't have to follow it, but that's my advice, and I want to make sure it's on the record.
Can you, can you-
So what I'm going to ask-
Can you tell us that, can you give us the last question?
Mr. Wilson, sir, you do not have your floor. You do not have your floor, sir. Mr. Wilson, you do not have the floor, sir, okay? And what I'm telling you is, you are, you are discussing something that we're not supposed to be. So what we're going to do now, if there are no more public comments on the agenda, we're going to move to item number five.
Madam Mayor.
Approve of the minutes of the August 14, 2025 regular meeting. Mr. Wilson?
Is there Attorney, or is she-
If I have to ask you again to please not disrupt this meeting, then I will ask the police chief to have you leave. So I'm, I'm telling you now, okay?
I, I, I want to-
I, no, sir, what we are on right now is item number five. Approval minutes of the August 14, 2025 regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Not, 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 not.
Okay, we have a proper, proper motion to approve minutes, is there a second?
You cannot use your voice or your-
I have a second, okay?
Again, on board.
Yes, sir, okay.
You cannot use your voice to silence someone that is speaking, that is in an open meeting.
Okay.
You, let me finish? You cannot just try to overtalk someone. And one thing that I have an issue with is that we're always talking about putting a citizen out of the meeting. I watched on the Facebook Live, I couldn't make it, where individuals stood in here and put a citizen out for asking a question, and you didn't say a word. Not a word. And that was one of your, your citizens. And they was escorted for asking a question. So if we're gonna have proper decorum in this meeting, we need to have it at all. So if an individual asks a question and was escorted out the meeting for asking a question, something should have been said about the interim mayor at that time. So let's not get in and flex our authority now, when we didn't say nothing when our citizen was put out that meeting.
Okay, so, thank you, sir. We have a proper motion and a second to approve the minutes of the August 14, 2025 regular meeting. So are there any corrections?
Was that Houston and that?
Trying to prove what? That, 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 we should approve it because those minutes are wrong. And for one thing, there's an issue, I'll let you, I'll let you go down the line with it, I'll let you go down the line.
Okay, Mr. Scott, any corrections to the meeting minutes? Ms. Houston?
Oh. That was already prior to another meeting.
Yes, I'm good.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, could be, yep.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, um, my correction stems from the fact that, in, in, in your, uh, statement that you made in regards to the discussion you have with those three, uh, council members, you said you asked them why did they vote no in the past? But I think that's, that's not what was said. So I think we should table these minutes until what was actually stated on that video is put into the minutes, because that's gonna be serious. And those minutes don't need to be pulled with corrections, and you state exactly what was stated, that's Ms. Day. Do you mind? I used to see this. Because on the second page, when you start saying the last paragraph, third page, I'm sorry, when you said, "Under the mayor's report, Ma'am Lewis began discussing the issue of an investigative audit. She disclosed to the council that she has spoken with three council members individually named Mr. Scott, Ms. Houston, and Ms. Day regarding their reasons for voting no on the issue in the past." That's not what you stated. You stated that how, you asked them, how did they feel about an investigative audit? So that's why I said we should have saw that letter before you sent it. And, and I wish that you want to be transparent, that you would go, you got time to go and, uh, put a copy of that letter that you sent to Attorney General and give to the council. That would be full of transparency.
Okay, so what is your change to the minutes?
You didn't, you didn't ask it, you didn't say you called in to ask them what are the reasons for voting no on the issue in the past.
Okay, that's a change you want?
I want you to put down what you said.
Um, interim mayor? Do you have a motion and a second on the minutes as they exist, not as amended? So if there need to be amendments that are proposed?
I can't, I didn't ask for a correction, ma'am, wait.
Yeah, I asked, I did ask.
And for the record, I have no objections to any proposed changes to the minutes, but procedurally, protocol needs to be followed, and so there will need to be a motion and a second to amend them first, you got a motion, a second to accept them as they are, I'm just trying to keep you off screen.
So, Ms. Houston, you made the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Made the motion, too, well.
Hold on just one second, hold on just one second, okay? I did ask Councilwoman Wells if he had any corrections.
Right.
So what I think should happen now is perhaps maybe your motion should be withdrawn, and a new motion for the minutes to be approved with correction.
I, I would actually recommend that you have a motion to amend, amend the motion in a second.
You don't have to do that, because the minutes right now is in draft form. So unless we approve it, it becomes final. So there can be changes made now before you may get final.
So, as we have done in the past, if there are corrections, we typically have a motion to accept the minutes with the, with the corrections.
I, I want the corrections to be in the minutes before we approve them, because this is gonna be a serious situation.
Okay, so we, yeah.
So now the attorney ends up-
Hold on just one second, because we have a motion and a second on the floor.
But before you can vote on it, there's only discussion on the item. And you can't silence the discussion.
You have said what you want to change.
I'm still saying it, and the attorney interrupted me, was saying that we can't do this, we gotta amend it. And Attorney Gray, you have to be representing the whole council, you're not the mayor's personal attorney.
And if you were listening to what was said, you would have met that.
So what I'm saying now is, what I'm saying, let the medical record see she, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman, may I just ask you a question, sir?
Okay, I, I got a question. Who prepared the minutes, Mr. Odom? Interim mayor prepare?
That's a violation. That's a violation.
That's a big problem.
That's a violation.
That's a big problem. You're not supposed to do that.
That's a violation.
It's another, uh, uh, I'm waiting on the attorney.
That the mayor can't do the minutes?
No, you cannot. The clerk is official record keeper, you cannot do the minutes at all. You cannot do this.
We have a proper motion and a second?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I thought you just said that you couldn't use your voice.
I make a motion to suspend this item, because the interim mayor-
Okay, there's already a motion on the floor.
No, no, I make a motion to suspend, okay? I make a motion to suspend the prior motion due to the fact that the interim mayor cannot write the minutes for the meetings. She cannot do that.
That's right.
That's a direct violation. The clerk is supposed to be the record keeper. So you cannot approve these with her writing the minutes. And I know who did it when I saw the statement. So now, we can continue to violate, so we can continue to violate open meetings if we want to, but that's a violation. The record keeper is the clerk. So I make a motion.
All right, so, Councilman Wells, we have a motion on the floor. Councilman Wells has made a motion to suspend.
You suspend, suspend, the motion that rules minutes.
You got two? Just one second, all right. So we are back to the original motion.
So, no, no, that, that motion's-
I thought that if you didn't want me to interrupt you, please don't interrupt me.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, say it again, so there's a motion on the table to amend?
No, there's a motion to suspend.
Somebody's ever made that.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to suspend.
Suspend and approve of the minutes.
There was a motion by Councilman Wells to suspend, I asked for a second, there was no second. That motion died.
A councilwoman just questioned, she didn't understand what was going on.
She, Councilwoman Harris said, yes.
You said, okay, so there's a motion to suspend, there's a second. Gerald, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Wells?
Yes.
Houston?
It's okay, he's only calling, that's it, ma'am.
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
It's done. Was that yay?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Scott.
Just say Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott, everybody on this floor. I don't think it's changing right now.
It is okay, just say Mr. Scott.
You start with Will.
Just say Scott, just say Scott and give the vote. You've called everybody with Mr. Scott. Just say Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Okay, so is there a new motion for these minutes?
No, the motion to suspend.
The minute is open.
No, your motion.
I made a motion to suspend the motion to adopt. And they voted for the one to suspend the motion to adopt.
So we have to take some action.
We have to take, you have a table.
Right, that's why I'm saying is there a motion.
Motion to table until the next day.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Ms. Day, second by Ms. Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I also want to indicate on that motion to.
Mr. Scott say, Mr. Scott opposed.
Okay, Mr. Scott opposed. I also want to add an addendum to that motion, to that item. That the interim mayor cannot write the minutes for the meeting.
Okay, so you're, you're actually asking to include a statement to the minutes, right?
Yes, yes.
Gerald, you got that?
Probably not.
Okay, the interim mayor.
You see, they, I don't know, they, they should have kind of.
And let's remember that we have the audio recording, so.
I'm sorry, we may have to do something without me writing them or something. I'm just not getting it. I'm not being able to do it. I used to do it officially, but things have changed. There's a lot of turmoil going on. I, I start writing something, I need to switch this. I write that and I'm just trying to chase myself.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll have Vanessa help you with these meet, these minutes, okay? She can listen to the audio recording. You can listen to it to make sure that you get what happened and the statement that Councilman Wells wanted to have. Okay?
I could certainly use some help.
Okay, all right. Item number six, approval resolution declaring unusable aerators at the wastewater treatment plant surplus. As I said before, we've got, I think it's thirteen or fifteen old steel aerators out at the sewer plant. They used to float in the oxidation pond. They're no longer operable. And we'd like to declare them surplus and then have the nets help us sell them to see if we can get some money on them. Just one second, just one second. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion by Ms. Harris, second. Second by Mrs. Day. Yes, ma'am?
I have a, a problem with this particular thing. We have radiation poisoning and Madison Parish has received one hundred twenty billion out of New York. And we have received a twenty billion bureaucracy funding, which I spoke to someone from the J C's at the meeting at Convention Center. And she admitted that we have received this money. If you sell something that has our radiation, I'd like to point for the city of Tallulah purposes, there are a series of Navy SEAL court cases that wound up being flip flopped over to Mississippi federal court that would have significance into our litigation and potential liability history wise. We have a serious courtroom drama that is just playing out slowly, like a Titanic hitting the iceberg moment. And if you sell this and get a profit and they come back and sue us for damages, we could lose a huge chunk of our twenty billion dollars just for this incompetence right at this meeting. This is where we need to have communication and we need to be able to recognize that people can get on the internet and they can find that Navy SEAL in the state of Mississippi court case like we can that's against Madison Parish and the city of Tallulah. And that ability for our super fund waste dump to have been documented from the eighties and nineties, despite Attorney Gray's statements that we don't, do not, we do have a super fund court litigation history for being a super fund waste dump in Madison Parish. And it is extraordinary, is super evil. But we have a water problem because of this. And if you sell something that's radioactive, you could cause innocent people tremendous harm. We have lost twenty percent of our population in Madison Parish, of death, not transfer out, to death. If you in any way violate the court judgment that was just handed down in federal court when Richmond Parish took Madison Parish and the city of Tallulah specifically to court to say that we could not have a direct plant, you would not just be in violation of a federal court ruling over there in Mississippi from the two thousand teens era. You would be in violation in less than four frickin' months of a federal court ruling that would have significant implications for killing people. What are we doing here? Have we lost our minds?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that. All right, so we have, are there any more comments on this particular item? Now we have a proper motion and a second to approve this resolution. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, we're now down to item number seven, introduction of an ordinance to adopt the municipal budgets for the city of Tallulah for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2026 and ending July 30th, I'm sorry, 2026 and ending July, June 30th, 2026. Again, we are introducing the budget for this current fiscal year that we're in. Is there a motion to introduce this order?
Motion that we introduce.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Mrs. Day. Is there a second?
Sure.
A proper second by Mr. Scott. Gerald, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Before we vote, I have a comment.
Okay.
You know, on mine's, it has Charles and Felton's name.
Okay. So I think what happened was since this has been passed along for so long, that just didn't get changed. So we can certainly change that to my name.
So I think before we introduce it, didn't have to have the right citizens on it, for lack of a speaking. You can't introduce, it was something with a former mayor's name on it.
So again, that is a typo that probably hasn't been changed. It can be changed. It can be signed. That ordinance is not going to be signed in any way until after the public hearing. So all we're doing is introducing it tonight.
But again, according to the, according to the ordinance, the law, if one step of this introduction is not correct, then it voids the whole process. So if the thing that was given to the council on mine says Charles and Felton's name, Charles doesn't, his name should not be on the ordinance. So you can't introduce an ordinance with someone who's no longer in office on the ordinance.
Okay, anything else, sir?
So is Charles going to be responsible if this is held?
I think I've already explained to you, this process started when Mr. Felton was still the mayor. But it is simply, it is simply a typo. It can certainly be changed. It is not going to be signed before we have the public hearing or anything.
Again, there's been a change in administration. And as the interim mayor, you supposed to have saw that. And you cannot introduce an ordinance with a former employee's name on the document. It just says a typo. Maybe I'm wrong.
I think you are.
You can introduce an ordinance with Charles's name on it?
I think if there's a typo, it certainly can be changed. Again, that ordinance is not going to be signed tonight. All we're doing is introducing an ordinance.
Just not introduce it. That's like.
I ask that you, at a minimum, introduce the ordinance by its full title. And I don't, I don't have an opinion, but I could certainly did research on whether or not the type of graphical error would be failed with the introduction of the ordinance.
It's title. Just like as an attorney, you, you can't, you won't introduce no evidence that has somebody else's name on it and then say I made a mistake. Come on, let's be real about that. You cannot introduce an ordinance with Mayor Felton's name on it and he been in office over a month. And it's gotta be air in the paper with this here. So this need, because you can't come back and say, well, I'm gonna do it before I get approved, that we're gonna change this. It cannot go on the paper like this. As a council, we cannot introduce an ordinance with a former mayor's name on it. Oh, now that's rigged on, I can't believe the attorney said introduce it like that. I just, I just blew it, Chris.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so I'm going to read the title of the ordinance, which I already did. An ordinance to adopt the municipal budgets for the city of Tallulah for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. Okay, we've got a proper motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, please.
Yes, sir.
We, we, you know, you know, it, it's, it's several violations that's going on in the, in the chamber. The attorney cannot communicate, be communicating with the council member talking about the District Five Council. And I'm sitting here looking at her, and that's wrong. And she shouldn't be sitting beside Jane because she's the people's attorney.
Right.
We can't keep doing it this way.
Right.
And do it all.
Wait, wait, no, 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 no. He's entitled to his opinion.
Oh, God.
Let's, let's allow him his opinion. We have a proper motion and a second on this item.
Question.
Yes, ma'am?
Question, let me ask you a question. According to that ordinance, I have to agree with Councilman Wells. Is it possible that you can table this, go make another copy, put your name on it and bring it back and pass it? Because you cannot put that in the paper with his name on it. That's against the law.
Okay.
That's my opinion that you do it. And I don't see how no council gonna vote on this with his name on it because Felton's does not hear.
And also.
See, I'm feeling about here.
Once you vote on it, it cannot be changed. Once you vote on it, whatever it's written states, whatever's on it, it has to stay the same. You cannot come back and change it after you vote introduce it this way.
With his name on it, yes.
You can't do it. If you vote to introduce, we vote to pass the introduction, it has to stay the same for you. You can't do it. It's so frustrating.
Oh.
So that's why we gotta be careful when we put stuff out. We gotta be careful reading.
Anybody can do that.
Okay, all right, so.
Now, can the attorney speak so everybody can hear?
I said if you'd like to make a motion to revise the ordinance, you certainly may.
You shouldn't have to revise it when the mayor no longer in office. It should be already correct.
I think you're.
Okay, let me ask this question.
No, no, I, I heard you.
So when we pass this tonight, and I'm, when we pass this tonight, when the newspaper run it, is he gonna have Charles's name on it?
So what the attorney just said was, we can make a motion to revise this, okay? I think we're making a big deal.
I'm just asking a question. I, I, I was, you know, I'm just asking a question.
So, hold on just one second, okay? Who made the motion? Did they make the motion? You made the second.
And both hands.
And your chair.
To revise.
No, to introduce the ordinance, okay? So, hold on, everybody. Hold on just one second, okay? Hold on just one second. So, attorney, you're saying that we can.
I believe what you can, what you could do is if there be another motion in a second to introduce the ordinance as revised by striking his name?
Striking it or putting it on another sheet.
Well, you, you could strike his name and it could just say mayor. Doesn't have to have anybody's.
The bottom line is you are an attorney. I'm not. My advice would be for her to, if you're gonna introduce it tonight, take it and have someone in the office to do it over and take his name off and put her name on it to properly sort of go into the master journal. But at that rate, that's against the law what you're doing.
So what we're, hold on, everybody, what we're going to do is I'm gonna call recess, okay? And we're going to change this, this ordinance right now to correct, to correct the name, okay?
Now also, not only can we get the letter sent to Attorney General.
I'll give it to you now.
I would recommend that prior to doing that, someone make a motion in a second to address that behavior. We can't, we can't act without having a motion.
You're not, you're not, you don't have rubber rules, all right, remember?
And so my concern is if there's a letter being drafted to Attorney General, if we go to recess, can, somebody, somebody got a motion, somebody motion.
I'll give you a copy of the letter after the meeting.
So someone has a motion to go to recess.
I'd like to motion for recess.
All in favor, say aye.
No.
Any opposed?
Yes, I hope.
At the same time, uh, your mayor, when you get each one of us a copy of the letter that you sent to the general. Well, I have a copy. I promise you that. That's public information. Attorney, you shouldn't sit there and advise them wrong. I say that you, you being an attorney, you know, you.
Would you like to go speak to me?
I can speak to you. I speak to you right there.
I, I won't bring it up to you.
Well, that's fine. That's what I said.
And that's why I have to cancel my motion.
Councilman Wells, you remember that, that experience? You remember that experience? The best person, you said, they seen with that experience.